Good afternoon, this is your Seattle Public Schools Board's Legislative Meeting. Roll call please. Ms. Ramirez?
Director Burke?
Here.
Director DeWolff?
Present.
Director Mack?
Here.
Director Petu? Director Pinkham?
Present.
Director Harris?
Present. And Director Gary is home ill. And hello to Director Gary, I know you're watching us. She will not be on the phone that I'm aware of. If she sees something, she certainly knows how to call in. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, or continue to sit if you like, because we are not in the NFL. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. So I'm gonna take advantage of being the President and all the extra work that that entails, and take personal privilege. Mr. Van Duser, front and center, please sir. Our Board Manager, Nate Van Duser, who has served with extreme distinction for a year and a half plus, who came to us from the Seattle City Council staff, who has accepted a free ride to Notre Dame for his master's degree in International Peace Studies. This is your last Board meeting. And for anyone who has served in an executive staff capacity, that has seven different constituents, meaning your Board members, that has to deal with goodness knows how many constituents in terms of staff in the schools, and the families, and the executive staff here in this building, you have done it with extraordinary grace, ethics, and a smile on your face, and we have worked you way too hard. And for that, you have our thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you Nate.
Yeah, thanks.
I'm not done yet. We're going to sing "Happy Birthday" to Director Pinkham. Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you. Happy birthday Director Pinkham, happy birthday to you. If we can't celebrate the good people, then what the heck are we doing here? And on that note, Superintendent Nylan, the floor is yours for celebrating other good people. Thank you.
We have a lot to celebrate tonight. We have a huge variety of students, along with their proud parents and families, along with coaches and others. We're gonna be recognizing athletic champions, Seal of Biliteracy students, Garfield chess, and our National Board certified teachers. I'd like to invite Dr. Flip Herndon to the podium to help us recognize our athletic champions.
Good evening. Flip Herndon, Associate Superintendent of Operations and Facilities. And one of the departments of the pleasure of overseeing is also athletics. So a quick word about athletics. Our vision in Seattle Public Schools athletics is excellence in academics and athletics. By connecting students to academics through an exceptional athletic program. And to meet this vision, our mission and goals, we try to transform by providing an exemplary athletic program with maximum student participation. Enabled by utilizing the individual and group skills and knowledge of our athletic coaches, teaching staff, and community to encourage excellence both in the classroom and on the playing field. To operate by coordinating, or the coordination of operating, an all encompassing athletic program in both the middle and high school levels, and through productivity by encouraging academic and athletic excellence for all participating students. We want to make sure that tonight we recognize a few of the accomplishments of our state championships, and of course, the staff that support them, and the families that support our students and show up and encourage them through their athletic endeavors. So with that, I'm going to announce some of the state team and individual champions. And if they're here, if you hear your name, please feel free to stand up until we're done at the end, and then I'll ask everybody for a round of applause.
And if I may, I neglected something. So during the presentation, we're gonna ask participants to stand. And then please don't leave, because after we've completed all of the recognitions, we wanna invite the Board down, and then we wanna bring our teams and our champions up, group by group, to do a group photo. But we don't wanna go up-down, 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 up-down. So we're gonna recognize our athletes now, and we'll ask you to stand, and then please remain seated and remain in the room so we can get a picture in a few minutes.
So tonight, we have three, four state championships that we're going to recognize. Three athletic and one academic state championship. The first recognition is the Garfield Boys Basketball Team, Head Coach Brandon Roy. Second is the Garfield Boys Soccer Team, Head Coach Carlos Enriquez. The Nathan Hale Ultimate Team, Head Coach Mike Heffron. And Academic State Champions Nathan Hale Girls Volleyball, Head Coach Gene Burt. For individual state champions, for boys, these are all in track and field. For boys, from Chief South, Elijah Jackson in the long jump and in the triple jump. Head Coach Lorna Consedine. From Ballard in the pole vault, Chad Cohen, Head Coach Bob Morenzi. And from West Seattle, 300 meter hurdles, Cass Elliott, Head Coach Will Harrison. Those are the boys. On the girls' side, we have four, or sorry, three individual state champions, also in track and field. From West Seattle in the pole vault, Chloe Cunliffe, Head Coach Will Harrison. She also set a new state record in the pole vault. From Garfield, Lyric Harris in the triple jump, Head Coach Quadjaleen Griffin. And from Ingram in the 100 meter high hurdles, Phoebe Salloway, Head Coaches Kurt Span and Bob Swift. And those are, those are our athletic champions for this year.
All right, thank you. And athletic champions don't go away just yet. Second up is the Seal of Biliteracy, and I'd like to introduce Dr. Michelle Aoki to tell us a little bit about the biliteracy diploma, and how many students have done that incredible work. Or, oh, here she comes.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Michelle Ansi Aoki, International Education Administrator. We just had some later arrivals from Chief South Ingram. It takes longer to get to school board meetings now with the later start times, you know. So tonight, we are honoring once again students who have qualified for the Seal of Biliteracy. It's the seniors now, because they will earn the seal by graduating and meeting all of our high school graduation requirements, and also demonstrating a high level of proficiency in a language besides English. So we have a number of students who were able to come out and join us tonight, representing Chief South, Cleveland, Franklin, Garfield, Nathan Hale, Roosevelt, and Southlake, and we have almost every high school represented, but not everyone made it this far. We also have 20 languages represented at this time. Amharic, Chinese, Mandarin, French, Japanese, Spanish, Tagalog, Tagrini, Vietnamese, as well as Arabic, Cambodian, Cantonese, Furu, Japanese, Lao, Oromo, Russian, Somali, Thai, Tagrini, Ukrainian. So we're at about 387 students so far, but there'll be a lot more adding when we get the AP and IB test results in the summer. And there's a lot more 11th graders and 10th, and we're now testing a lot of 8th and 9th graders, so they'll be showing up here in just a few years. So I'd just like the students who are in the audience to stand up when I call your school, just so we can acknowledge them. And then, students, after, at the end of the program, you'll be invited to come up to the side, and we'll come forward for a picture, okay? So if you're students from Chief South, please stand up. They made a, oh, they're there, way in the back. Crowd a night. How about Cleveland and Franklin? We'll do a couple at a time. Cleveland and Franklin? Back there also, okay. Garfield and Nathan Hale? Okay, thank you. Roosevelt and Southlake High School. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Thank you to the district for your support and for allowing us to recognize our students tonight. And we'll be back for pictures in a few minutes.
All right, thank you. I'd like to now introduce Executive Director, Dr. Sarah Pritchett, to tell us about the Garfield Chess.
Emphasis on the word "doctor." Thank you, Sarah Pritchett, Executive Director of Schools. I'd like to bring up Ted Howard, who has been the Principal of Garfield High School for over 14 years, to speak about our chess team this year and their great accomplishments. Again, Principal Howard.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett, and I'd say congratulations to Dr. Pritchett, new doctor this year. Give a round of applause. I'd like to bring up Mr. Nemora and Garfield Chess Team. Come on, Garfield Chess Team.
All right, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Jeff Nemora. I'm the coach of the Garfield Chess Team. And the Garfield Chess Team enjoyed a highly successful season this year. In February, we defeated our rival and perennial powerhouse Lakeside School 4 to 1 to win the Seattle Metro League title. Lakeside has been one of the top teams in the country for many years, and was ranked number two nationally the past two years. In March, we finished at the top in the Washington State Team Chess Championship, defeating top seed Newport in the last round 3 to 2. This year's state title is the seventh in Garfield State history. Oh, thank you. Garfield's now placed among the top teams at state every year for the past 20 years, winning two titles, placing second four times and placing third three times in that time span. In April, we traveled to Columbus, Ohio to compete with the best teams from all over the country, and we placed 12th. The Garfield Chess Team would like to acknowledge and thank Principal Howard for all of his work in making this trip possible. Thank you, Mr. Howard. Okay, now I'd like to introduce the students who represented Garfield at Nationals. Okay, we'll start here on the left. We have a senior, his name is Zuberry Wilson. Okay, this is... And this is Zuberry's fourth year on the chess team, so we're very lucky to have him for four years. Okay, also another senior in his fourth year, fourth year on the chess team, we have Carl Dutton. And our next student is a freshman, his first year on the chess team, Andreas Farney. Okay, next, we have another senior, his fourth year on the chess team. His name is Bashir Abdel Fattah. And last, we have a junior, his third year on the chess team, a very strong chess player, one of the very top chess players in the country. Last year, he won the national championship for high school students. I'd like to introduce Roland Feng. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you.
And lastly, I'd like to introduce Keshel Tonner, Executive Director for Curriculum Instruction Support, to tell us a little bit about National Board certified teachers. And wow, we have a lot of teachers who've worked really hard this last year.
That's true. Greetings. National Board certified teachers are highly accomplished educators who meet high and rigorous standards set by the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards. National Board certification is achieved upon successful completion of a voluntary assessment program designed to recognize effective and accomplished teachers who meet high standards based on what teachers should know and be able to do. Seattle Public Schools has 550 employees who have achieved certification from National Board for Professional Teaching Standards, including 106 teachers who successfully completed their certification progress, process this year. That's pretty remarkable. You have the names of all 106 teachers tonight. And if you're a National Board teacher this year or in the past, would you please stand up so we can recognize you? Or if you're already standing, we'll clap for you.
I always, I always get a little tongue-tied over this, and we certainly have more National Board certified teachers than any other district in the state, because we're big. We also have one of the highest percentages, I have to qualify myself. There's a few districts in Eastern Washington, I have three teachers, and they're all certified. But statistically, Seattle, together with SEA, WA, and all of the others, has done an amazing job of helping those create great teaching staff. Nate, so we're doing pictures. Tell us again how we're doing this.
Okay, athletes and coaches, athletes and coaches if you could come up. Athletes and coaches, if you could come up for a picture. All together, yeah. Everyone, yeah.
Okay. So... So Board Directors, we need to be in the front row so we can hear the Leschi musicians. Thank you.
Thank you. As we're getting set up for this, we are from Leschi Elementary. My name's Nathaniel Oxford. We're here with Sally Baldwin and Thea as well. At Leschi, we are fortunate enough to have, to have not just our regular elementary instrumental music program during the day, but we also have an after-school program here that is put on by Seattle Music Partners. And so we've collaborated on this event to come and bring, we've brought several of our groups each to play a little bit tonight to give a different flavor. Because we have different things going on, we, I try to give it a little... Sure. All right. So we're collaborating on this, on this event to showcase both of what we do. Keep in mind, when we have elementary instrumental groups in here, these kids, they do 30 minutes a week. So by the end of the year, they've done 15 hours, just 15 hours on the instruments. Did you have anything to say, Sally?
Yeah, I was just going to say that I'm Sally Baldwin, and I'm the Education Director of Seattle Music Partners. So to supplement only having that 15 hours for the entire year of instruction, we step in and we have volunteers come to the schools such as Leschi, and it is a nonprofit, completely funded by donations, that we can actually provide for them about three hours of instruction a week. I did not do the math on that. For 30 weeks, though, someone else can do that. But yeah, we have two groups that we also would like to perform for you, and we have lots of music, so we're gonna share that now. Thank you. Thank you.
You guys got room? You guys got room, Julian? Okay. Push them back if you need to. Okay. Oh, and you ready?
That was so great. Thank you, Mr. Oxford. And the next song we're gonna play for you is Sia Hamba. Watch them all run. And it is a traditional South African tune. The next song we're gonna play for you is from our advanced strings, which is Dragon Hunter. Please stand up, guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. That was awesome. It's the best part of our meetings, bar none. Channel 26, you can watch yourselves on YouTube. Could the two of you all come up and tell us about your history of teaching music and in the Seattle School District? And can you also address which other schools your CBO assists with music education? Because I think we need to know that.
Thank you.
Alright. I have been working as an elementary instrumental music teacher for three years in the Seattle Schools. And I have six schools this year at Leschi. This is my second year at Leschi. And I had some things that I set out to do there this year. And one of them just involved more collaboration between, you know, the SPS program and the Seattle Music Partners program. And what we've seen in that is really it's really made a big difference, just the teamwork, getting the year started off and everything else. So, I'm really glad to be here. I'm a trombone player primarily, and so... But we have to do all the instruments. Actually, I think 40% of my interview was performing the different instruments when I started on a couple of years ago. Sally?
Yeah. Hi, so Seattle Music Partners actually works with schools that are focused in the Central District area for Seattle Public Schools. And who we service are Leschi Elementary, Bela Gatzard Elementary, Madrona Elementary, and Lowell Elementary. And the students get private one-on-one lessons, one day a week, at each one of those schools. And where do we get those volunteers from? Are actually from many of the high schools around here. All of the SPS high schools. A lot of the schools over in the Kirkland area on the east side, Shoreline area schools, Ingram, all the ones that are north. We recruit everywhere at UW. We do a lot of recruiting everywhere to get the volunteers to come in. The other students that we have that are not here, that are not in 4th and 5th grade, we actually have a 6th through 8th grade program that meets on Wednesday evenings. And those are from, I think, eight different middle schools. I know Alki, Mercer, Washington, for sure. There is, yeah, and so, because it's at so many different schools, we have them come to us at Garfield Community Center. So, it's a very cool thing to be centrally located, that the students still, after they're out of the elementary school, they come back for our instruction. And part of the day is obviously a group day that we do on a second day a week. So, it really helps the students to be able to prepare with their individual volunteers, and then also to be able to focus and create music in a group.
Outstanding. Thanks very much. My personal fantasy for the Seattle Public Schools is every student, every day, music, and we will blow our math scores through the roof. Thank you again. Unfortunately, we had a bit of a hiccup on the seal of biliteracy, and West Seattle High School wasn't called out. And specifically, Carla Hernandez Gallegos, please stand and be recognized. Thank you so much. Dr. Nylane, the floor is yours for superintendent contact.
Alright.
Comments.
Thank you. I'm gonna be brief with my comments tonight. There is some additional information, including our good news on the table in the back, along with some of our upcoming community engagement. June is LGBTQ Pride Month, and on the morning of June 1st, starting off the month in grand style, staff, students, families, community members join Directors Harris and DeWolfe, along with Clover Cod, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, to raise the LGBTQ and transgender pride flags at the John Stanford Center. Crowd was gathered out here. It must have been exciting with all the construction going on out there. Please remember that on June 24th is the city's pride parade, and we'll have a big yellow bus in the parade, and people can march or... and participate. So, information is on our homepage. In just a few weeks, days, our district and our community and staff and students, families, are gonna be celebrating graduation ceremonies. And that's always an exciting part of the year, is we congratulate students, not just on the completion of their senior year, but their time in Seattle Public Schools and completion of an important milestone in their life. I'm sure I speak for the board. We get to show up and sit on the stage and shake a few hands, but it becomes apparent how much work goes into preparing all of the pomp and circumstance with music and programs and all of the that goes with it. So, thank you to our staff for making that happen. And thank you to the board for your participation. It makes a long week, I know, but it's fun to celebrate with the kids. Although our graduations are about celebrations, we certainly are saddened by the loss of our Franklin High School senior. And you'll notice that up here in the front, the directors have an orange ribbon. Ryan Dela Cruz was shot and killed at a city park last week. Franklin seniors are going to be honoring him in a variety of ways. On Friday, they're gonna be creating a human orange ribbon along Rainier Avenue, symbolic of the color for reducing gun violence. And so, many of our staff, and this is a participation event by Franklin High School Interagency, and I think some of the other high schools, trying to make a human chain between Rainier Beach and Franklin. So, we certainly are saddened on behalf of the family and the students at Franklin. So, they actually were supposed to be here tonight, be recognized as national champions with regard to their their debate, not debate, but their mock trial. Thank you. So, our strategic plan has three big goals. Educational excellence and equity, efficient systems, and engagement. I'll give a brief recap on each one of those. Under our excellence and equity, I would like to invite Susan Grant, CTE Specialist, to come talk about some of the highlights from our recent CTE culinary partnership and a district-wide summit.
Stand on. There you go. I'm Susan Grant. I'm CTE Specialist here at the district. And thank you for the opportunity to highlight this industry partnership with Molly Moon Ice Cream and our culinary classes across the district. I'd like to showcase the winning Sunday as part of this challenge and competition that we had. I have with me today Emily Kim, who is the Marketing and Public Relations Managers of Molly Moon Ice Cream, and I'll turn it over to her for a minute to talk a little bit about the partnership.
Hi. I just wanted to come in and say how amazing this partnership was for us at Molly Moon's. We are so excited to do this this year and kind of strengthen our partnership with Seattle Public Schools, which has always been a main pillar for us. But we haven't done a big official partnership until this year. And we were so excited to bring five culinary classrooms, Ingram, West Seattle, Roosevelt, Rainier Beach, and I am blanking on the fifth one. Oh, Franklin, the winner of the challenge. But into our headquarters and have our chefs teach them all about our sustainable sourcing and why local and organic is important, and how to make toppings, and how we make our ice cream, and about culinary careers, and the different places in the field that you can go with a culinary background and where you can start. It was amazing. The students were so talented. We honestly wanted to serve every single Sunday that we got in the competition. They were so impressive. I mean, like, they came up with things that our kitchen teams would come up with, and they were all so delicious. It was really, really hard to choose a winner. But this amazing blueberry compote and shortbread that Franklin came up with was so good. We're so proud. Jagana.[598.91][598.91](applause)
Hi, my name is Lillian, I'm a senior at Franklin High School. For the June Sunday special at Molly Moons, Franklin High School Advanced Culinary has a Sunday called Seattle Summer. We have Molly Moon Sweet Cream Ice Cream for the creamy flavor topped with organic wild blueberries, thickened with organic blueberry jam to keep the tartness of the berries in a tasty sauce. The organic wild blueberry sauce is paired with Molly Moon's dark fudge sauce for the bitter component. The sundae is topped with whipped cream, shortbread cookie crumbles with cinnamon, sugar, and kosher salt, and a chunk of cherry. Enjoy the taste of the northwest in our Seattle Summer Sundae. Thank you.[639.66][639.66](applause)
Hello, my name is Joanna Hernandez, I'm a junior at Franklin High School. In the process of creating the sundae, we wanted to make sure that our recipes were cost-effective for Molly Moon Ice Cream, and we used one of her existing toppings, that is dark fudge.[662.66][662.66](applause)
Hi, my name is David Reyes Gomez from Franklin High School. It was great to have a real challenge from this ice cream challenge, I guess. It was one of the greatest things to do because I could have worked with more of my classmates and learning new stuff, and I swear I was good with the ice cream, so thank you very much.[697.75][697.75](applause)
Hi, my name is Hawa, I'm a sophomore from Franklin High School. I'm taking the culinary class so I can have more skills at home and to get a job. Please support Molly Moon by purchasing our award-winning sundae, which is Seattle Summer. All proceeds will be donated to Seattle School District's culinary programs. Help us gain skills to pay the bills.[728.41][728.41](applause)
Thank you once again. Again, you can go purchase your sundae at any of the Molly Moon stores through the month of June and support CTE Culinary.
All right, thank you very much.[744.41][744.41](applause) Sounds like you've been working on how to make those tantalizingly exciting and make us all rush out and buy one, so thank you. Other work under excellence and equity, the school board met and worked through their continuing work toward our agenda item tonight in terms of SMART goals coming up, so appreciate that time. And then the board met in an all-day retreat on Saturday with incoming Superintendent Juno to talk about what the strengths and opportunities and challenges are for the district in the time ahead. Goal two is improving systems, and the board also met recently in a workshop session to continue moving the budget forward. And the budget has good news for this coming year, in that there is a little bit more money than we had anticipated from the legislature, and that is well and good. And at the same time, we continue to be concerned as a district over the state's inability to fully fund their promises going forward. So after this coming year, the budget does not look as rosy, and, yeah, I'll stop there. State auditors, Exent Conference was held this last week. Overall, a good audit. There was some findings that were noted that we will address and work on. Appreciate the good work of our budget staff, and auditors, we're a big system, so they're here for a long period of time and look at everything in great detail. And then we appreciate their feedback on the things that we are doing well and the things that we can do better on. And then finally, under that area, we also held a work session on the upcoming BECS V levy that's supposed to be, is scheduled for February of 2019, and trying to figure out how to balance a whole bunch of priorities within the district. What are the schools that need to be replaced? What are the schools that need updated in terms of maintenance? And where do we have to attend to growth and safety? And so that's a challenge. Increasing cost of construction is also adding to the price of that endeavor. And then the third goal is the engagement goal, and our communication survey is out, and will close on June 12th, and so we value the input from our families to let us know how we're doing on communicating and involving our community in terms of decision-making items that may impact them. And a few good news items. The US News and World Report released their list of top schools recently, and we had Roosevelt, Garfield, Ballard, Nathan Hale, Cleveland, Franklin, and the Center School listed in that report, so congratulations to those schools. And the last item under good news that I'll talk about, again, there's more on the back table, is that we had a large group of our district administrators, principals, as well as district leaders, who've been working hard for a number of years at the University of Washington on completing their doctoral work. And so I would like to congratulate, give congratulations. They actually walked last night at Heck Edmondson at the University of Washington. I'm sure they have pictures if you'd like to see them. I'd like to congratulate Dr. Kelly Aramaki, Dr. Maria Bruder, Dr. Marnie Campbell, Dr. Helen Young, Dr. Mia Williams, Dr. Sarah Pritchett, and Dr. Keisha Scarlett.[996.16][996.16](applause)
That concludes my remarks. Okay, we're at the part of the board meeting where committee chairs need to report out. And a time check, it is 5:10, we start public testimony at 5:30. Director Mack, Chair of Operations, please.
If it's okay, I'll actually just touch quickly on the legislative piece first. Dr. Geary's out, but in a couple of weeks, I'll be going back to the WASTA Legislative Committee for the second round of discussing the state-level propositions that'll be on for the state school board directors association's legislative committee. And that'll eventually go to the full membership for voting. Hot items there are school safety, gun safety, et cetera, and I'm excited to be a part of the process of supporting the entire state in increasing legislation around those issues. For operations, we have a packet that I think is about 200 pages long for tomorrow. As Superintendent Nyland just mentioned, we recently held a work session on our next Capitol levy, BECS, and we'll be tomorrow meeting about, it's a two-page agenda, important contracts like the Dairy Fresh Farms, duck delivery, but also some exciting ones, the contractor around our Orca cards for high school students. And the City of Seattle is expanding the support to ensure that students have Orca cards, and we have that on our agenda, as well as a number of construction-related board action reports. And we'll be talking about the 2018-19 Capitol Budget for Technology, so getting a little bit more specific detail on what we plan to be doing in the coming year around our technology budget. I think the number that we have budgeted is around 29 million for the year, so we'll just get a little bit more update on what that plan is and what we'll be, expect to be spending it on. And we'll also be talking about the next work session on BECS. We're going to be having essentially one a month until we get to a place where we actually have the full plan together. And that next BECS work session's planned for June, oh, I'm sorry, June 25th, yes, that's correct, June 25th. So we're going to be talking about the facilities master plan and the table of contents, what goes in there, and also some conversation around our community engagement plan for BECS V. Additionally, as was already sent out in notification, we have a task force around the facility master plan that's being formed. The advertisements for that went out a couple of weeks ago. The deadline for submitting is tomorrow, so I want to put a shout out that we're hoping to get some folks engaged in the facility master plan task force to support the review around our capacity planning and then our matrix of our priorities. And those meetings are going to be happening between now and August, and we're going to do our best to kind of condense them into six meetings, just do some really intensive work around those topics, and that support will be really good for us as a board to have, the community to help engage and help us review that information. So looking forward to that, and I encourage anyone and everyone to apply that is interested in supporting that effort. Additionally, we also have another board committee, the BECS BTA Oversight Committee. This committee's been in place for, I'm not exactly sure how many years, I think as long as the BECS has existed, so it's been probably a good 20 years. And we recently expanded the charter in January to include oversight over our BTA levy, which is the Buildings Technology and Athletics or Academics Levy that comes on alternating years. And we're at a point where we need more members. We have some members that are retiring and some transitions that are happening, and so we'll be advertising for that in the not-so-distant future, and I just wanted to put that out there so folks know that we'll be looking for experts around building facilities and oversight of the levies. And I think that's about it.
Other chairs? Director Burke, Curriculum and Instruction.
Okay, curriculum instruction, where of course all the fun happens. We always try to say that our committees are the best committees, but coming up, at our next one, we have the annual approval of schools, which you all know and love as CSIPS, or Continued School Improvement Plans. Every year, these are approved, have to be approved by the board per state law. You've heard conversation around them, how they're, when you're looking at them for your schools, for your regions, pay special attention. The high schools have all been asked to focus on a 24-credit readiness, how they're doing that in their school. The middle schools are all being asked to focus on the goal of preparing students in mathematics so that they can be successful in algebra. And the elementary schools are being asked to focus on goals around literacy, specifically the elementary adoption and reading by third grade. So that's really exciting, and I think that the feedback we've gotten from buildings and from administration is that these have been really powerful documents to help pull together common ideas. We have a standing agenda item of the 24-credit update, where we'll be talking a little bit more about professional development plans for high school educators to be able to deal with the 24-credit schedules. We have an instructional materials update, which will include discussion of the science adoption process, K-12 science adoption process that is now, just now getting underway. We're discussing policies on electronic learning. They're just going to be discussed, we're not actually going to move them forward, but they're going to, we're going to develop them out a little bit, electronic learning, library materials. And we have some other special attention items, the annual assessment report. The district and SEA negotiate every year with a joint workforce, the calendar of assessments. And so this is where we will hear as a committee and as a board, what is our assessment calendar for next year? So we're trying to figure out, I mean, they've already been working through how to get the best, how to align the assessments with all of the other things that take place and maximize student instructional time. And then we'll also get an update on Naviance, which I think is an interesting topic for all of us to figure out how to provide the most value for our students and protect our student data. Always a good thing.
Director Pinkham, Audit and Finance Chair.
All right, Audit and Finance. Yesterday, we had our quarterly audit meeting, which went very well because that was my actual birthday. Well, it wasn't today, so, and thank you for the birthday wishes yesterday to my fellow board members and the staff that was there. Definitely appreciated. Update, we should be sharing some audits at the next board meeting, I believe on June 27th, for two schools that have been completed, Cleveland and Center School, to give information on those. We also had the updates on various audit reports from our Audit Response Management, Curriculum Instruction, Capital Projects, Human Resources, and Budget and Finance. A lot of this dealt with retention of records, you know, how long do we have to keep them? And also what we're actually seeing, what's being put in those records. We're having to manage those and make sure people know, hey, after so many years, you can destroy them, and also that, hey, there's some records we don't need to put in the file, and because of those people that may have access to them, we need to be careful of what information's in there. So we got teams working on those. Also, Capital Projects, new GCZM recommendations that are going through and how we manage those, do we bring in a third party to do some review of those? So I want to thank all, Richard Best and Flip Herndon for the work they're doing there. Human Resources, big lift here, is actually the LEAF program, we're actually trying to monitor that to keep track of LEAF properly for our staff and make sure they're getting compensated accordingly. Budget and Finance, our big lift now for that is new codes. The state's making us do our budget codes a little bit differently, so we've got to learn these new codes, and it's going to take a lift for us to do that, and thank you to Joel Burge and her staff that this will go as smoothly as possible. Other issues that we're looking at with our audit is management of our key systems and how schools may give out keys and copies of keys, we need to make sure that we have a proper system to track those. And it's just great to see that those are coming forward and people are starting to say, hey, these are issues we've got to make sure we monitor and be responsible for, especially when we're seeing things across the country with people having access to schools when they probably shouldn't be. So glad that they're keeping that as a priority. Other updates from Modern Finance, our budget, we'll have a hearing for the community on, is it June 27th, right before the next board meeting, so please attend and look at the documents that are current there, and come by and share your input on the budget for the next year and anything else you would like to share. And I appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Okay, I believe we are done with committee reports, is that correct? Okay. There's not a lot on exact. We're trying to take care of business and push it through and do the best job we can.
That's it?
There you go, there's your update. I would suggest we take a seven-minute break, be back here for 5:30 for public testimony, and we have to start public testimony at 5:30, and you will be right after public testimony. Thank you.[1698.13][1698.13](music)